All right. Call me your order. Thank you all for being here today. It's our last council meeting of the season. And before we move on too far, I'm going to ask Councilor Fair to bring the opening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing we're in the Christmas season, I thought it would be appropriate that I read the old Christmas story, Luke Chapter Two. And it came to pass in those days that a decree went out from Caesar Augustus that all the world would be registered. The census first took place while Corinius was governor of Syria, so all went to be registered, everyone to his own city. Joseph also went up from Galilee out of the city of Nazareth into Judea to the city of David, which is called Bethlehem because he was of the house and lineage of David, to be registered with Mary, his betrothed wife, who was with child. So it was that while they were there, the days were completed for her to be delivered. And she brought forth her firstborn son and wrapped him in swathing cloths and laid him in a manger because there was no room for them in the inn. Now, there were in the same shepherd country shepherds living out in the fields, keeping watch over their flock by night. And behold, an angel of the Lord stood before them, and the glory of the Lord shone around them, and they were greatly afraid. Then the angel said to them, "Do not be afraid; for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which will be to all people. For there is born to you this day in the city of David a Savior, who is Christ the Lord, and this will be the sign to you: you will find a babe wrapped in swathing clothes lying in a manger." And suddenly there was with the angel a multitude of the heavenly host praising God and saying, "Glory to God in the highest, and on earth peace, goodwill toward men." So it was when the angels had gone away from them into heaven that the shepherds said to one another, "Let us now go to Bethlehem and see this thing that has come to pass, which the Lord has made known to us." And they came with haste and found Mary and Joseph and the babe lying in a manger. And when they had seen him, they made widely known the saying which was told them concerning this child, and all those who heard it marveled at those things which were told them by the shepherds. But Mary kept all these things and pondered them in her heart. Then the shepherds returned glorifying and praising God for all the things that they had heard and seen as it was told them. I'm sure all of us have had the opportunity to celebrate Christmas once, twice, or maybe multiple times this Christmas. Christmas should always be a time of joy and celebration, but unfortunately, it's not that for everyone. Last week, we saw the community come together for the toy drive, and that will enable a few more families to have a bit happier Christmas. We live in a city that has a reputation for being one of the more benevolent communities in the country. This Christmas, I trust that we will all try to be considerate of our fellow citizens, try to make Christmas a little more joyous time of year for everyone we can. I pray that this Christmas will be a wonderful time for all of you as well.
Thank you, Councilor Fair. We have the agenda in front of us. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Councilor Penner, second by Councilor Funk. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. We have the minutes for December 1st. This is on page one. Any questions on those? Seeing none, can I ask for a motion to approve the minutes, please? Councilor Fair, second by Councilor Siemens. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. No business arising from the minutes. We're not quite at 7:35, and so we'll go to the council table in the back of the book. Can I have a motion to approve the council table? Second by Councilor Penner. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. Page fifteen. We have lottery licenses. Mr. Workantine, this is something that we normally have to do every year, is that right?
That is correct for every lottery license application that is filed.
All right, and this is up to a maximum of $5,000. Anything above that has to go in a different process, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Swagstrm to approve. Move to approve the motion on the bottom, second by Councilor Siemens. Any discussion? Anything further from counsel? Call for the question. All those in favor. We have the business, 2015 Business Realty Tax Cancellations on page sixteen. Counsel, there is a recommendation, and we need a resolution in regards to the cancellations. Works out to just over six, or about $6,600. Can I have a motion, please? Councilor Swagstrm, moved by Councilor Swagstrm, second by Councilor Penner. Any discussion? Anything further from counsel? All right, counsel, this is the standard. We go through this every year. If a business either moves or changes location or stops functioning, then this is where it ends up. Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. We have the nine D, the supplementary taxes on page seventeen. There's a motion on the bottom of page seventeen. Can I have a motion? Can I have someone move that, please? Councilor Siemens, second by Councilor Fair. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Call for the question. All those in favor. We will now move to the public hearing. This is in regards to Bylaw 2016, Local Improvement Plan 2016-01, Barkman Avenue Infrastructural Renewal. I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workantine, I ask you to introduce this, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is a bylaw, or an application for bylaw to approve a local improvement for the proposed reconstruction of approximately three blocks of Barkman Avenue between Main Street and Henry Street in Steinbach as a local improvement project in 2016. Surface works, water main and sewer mains are planned to be replaced as the infrastructure on this stretch of roadway has reached its, reached the end of its useful life, and the city administration is proposing to, to proceed with the reconstruction. The recommendation is that counsel proceed with this project subject to satisfactory outcome of the public hearing, and also subject to the municipal board approval of the borrowing authority of $1 million that's being sought under this proposal. Right now, the project proposal is for a total construction cost of $2.14 million, of which $1 million will be through a long-term borrowing to be repaid over a five-year period. The balance of the funding that is being proposed is to raise $840,000 through the Canada-Manitoba Infrastructure Program, and also an additional $300,000 through the Municipal Road Improvement Fund Program. Notices, as required under the Municipal Act, were issued. There is one registered objection on file to the proposed local improvement, and that is in counsel's information package. And I, as I said, am recommending that counsel proceed with first and second reading subject to satisfactory, satisfactory outcome of the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions on this specific file? Ask one last time. Anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Swagstrm.
I'll make the motion for first reading.
Thank you. Move first reading, second by Councilor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is obviously a significant project, and that's because infrastructure renewal continues to be a priority for the city. As is noted, this will reconstruct the surface works, water main and sewer main and Barkman Avenue between Main Street and Henry Street, and this is a local improvement. As was also noted, the bulk of this funding will actually be coming from other funding sources, other levels of government through grants, which is very helpful. $1 million of it will be borrowed, again, over a five-year borrowing term, which we paid off during that time. Should be noted as well that, that this is not having any impact on our local tax rate because the plan already for next year is to, is to have a net zero increase, which means that the municipal portion of taxes will not be increasing as a result of the assessment. And so this is all, this has all been worked into the budget that will be coming forward.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I'd just like to add, this is also one of Steinbach's older streets, and this is part of the plan to have a very ordered reconstruction and new infrastructure placed on older streets so that we can keep up with our infrastructure costs.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing? All right, counsel, this is an important project, and like Councilor Penner has said, this is part of a long-term strategy that we've had and that we've been implementing over the last quite a number of years, and that is to renew our underground infrastructure and making sure that we are ahead of problems rather than reacting to problems. This is a good project. It isn't cheap to do, but at the same time, we are seeing definite results by doing this. We are seeing less maintenance that has to be performed on a sporadic basis, and we're actually seeing infrastructure last and, and be renewed before a crisis hits. So it's good to see us proceeding with this. This is also another project that we're seeing partnership with other levels of government. This is important. We have not only, it's not only municipal tax dollars going into this, but it's a partnership between provincial and federal governments as well, and that's important. That's how we can get more things done, and it's important to build those relationships. So we appreciate that as we move forward. Call for the question. All those in favor. Opposed? Carried. Can I have a motion for second reading, please? Councilor Penner, second by Councilor Fair. Any discussion?
No.
Anything further? Call for the question. All those in favor of second reading. Carried. All right, how this will proceed then, is this, the, the one objector will be sent a further objection request. If that proceeds, then this will move municipal board, and they will react. Mr. Workantine, do you have a timeline on that?
General response timeline is anywhere from 30 to 45 days, so expect probably by mid to end of January, there should be a response.
All right, and then we would, if, if that is approved, we'll give third reading, and we'll be able to move to tender early in March?
Probably, yeah, February. I would say February.
All right. No delegations today. Anything further from the city manager in regards to reports or recommendations?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Then nine E, we have the building permits for November, page eighteen. Motion to approve by Councilor Siemens, second by Councilor Funk. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor. Have bylaw 2061 on page nineteen. Mr. Workantine, I'll ask you to just briefly introduce this.
This particular bylaw is for the issuance of a debenture for a project that the city completed in 2015. That was for the project to reconstruct a portion of Elmdale and also Lumber Avenue. The, the project has been substantially completed, and the bylaw seeks to approve a debenture issue of $2.145 million to, to cover the, the funding of the majority of the project costs based on the, the city did proceed with seeking quotes for the provision of the, of the debt financing. Lowest and best rate has been offered by the Royal Bank of Canada at a rate of 2.4% over the five-year term. Recommendation for counsel to give this bylaw first and second reading.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Siemens?
Motion to approve.
Approve first reading. Thank you, second by Councilor Fair. Go ahead, Councilor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a huge project for us this last year. It's nearing completion. I don't think it's quite complete, but it's very close to being complete, and it has, it was part of our longer-term project with Elmdale and the current construction and so on, it, so to improve our downtown, and we got it at a 2.4% interest over a five-year debt versus a 7%, which was projected. So that's, we've got good funding, good rates on it, and it is only for a five-year period as is our normal.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is also something I was budgeted for, so again, it's not going to affect our tax rate at all because it was in our budget, so.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing? Counsel, you can see that this is coming in, the debenture is coming in under what we expected to, to ask for, which is good. It also came in probably at the second lowest rate that we've ever had as, as a city, so that's also very good. 2.4% is, is a very modest price to pay for a five-year debenture, so I think that's also favorable for our city. Call for the question. All those in favor of first reading. Carried. Can someone move second reading, please? Councilor Funk, second by Councilor Swagstrm. Any discussion?
Nothing, Dad.
Anything further? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. Bylaw 2066, this is page nine, sorry, this is page twenty-three. Mr. Workantine.
This bylaw 2066, as per recommendation from council SPC meeting of, sorry, December the eighth, recommendation is to proceed with amendments to zoning bylaw 2055 with respect to mobile sign provisions. The sections as indicated in the agenda package in 139 were recommended for amendment as is written. What this bylaw seeks to, to amend is those particular provisions, and the council's approval of first reading to this bylaw would permit the public notice to be issued and a public hearing for purposes of the Planning Act to be scheduled, and then to proceed with second reading and subsequent approval.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Swagstrm.
I'll move first reading of the amendment.
Second by Councilor Fair. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is obviously consistent with the direction that was set forth at the SPC meeting and also at the previous council meeting, we've reached an initiating resolution. This simply extends the time period of mobile signs to a one-year period, so I think it's appropriate to move ahead.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Siemens?
I'll speak against the motion simply. I, I think the 365 days is too long a time period, but we did push an amendment at the SPC meeting, so we won't do it here, but it is, right now, that, that means it's a permanent sign, and with approval, once a year, they need to come in for a permit. I think a couple of things might happen, and that would be that we'll have deterioration of our signs, and I think this will be back at the council table in the near future.
Further discussion? Councilor Penner?
I will also vote against the motion. I would concur with Councilor Siemens in that what we're doing effectively is establishing permanent freestanding signage that doesn't have any variation application process. These mobile signs are not considered for their impact on properties or visibility or how they affect the public realm. They're not considered on development proposals when new site is development, is developed. When we visited this issue a few years ago in the review, there was considerable public input, and there was a focus by the council to actually make sure the aesthetic environment of the city is protected. So I ask then, what has happened? Have we changed our focus here? Are we not considering the aesthetic impact on our city? And what has happened to that public engagement process? Now we're not listening to it, so I, I don't understand why we're doing this. Thirdly, we do have allowances in our sign bylaw to reflect updating your sign info because we have businesses that are currently allowed to have changeable copy on their permanent signs, so they can advertise when things change, and they can react to sales or whatever they need to advertise. Fourthly, other communities are not all doing this, contrary to what we may have heard. Portage, Brandon, Burden, Niverville all have lesser limits to sign mobile signs like this, so we would not be the only one. As well, we don't even know what the wider community really thinks of this. All we've heard is comments from people that have these signs, so we have no idea what the wider community feels about portable signs and the length of time for these permits. So I would say that this is ill-advised, and what we should do is consider the effects before we have a reaction to some people in the community on this issue.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe this bylaw is here because we were too restrictive on our, on our bylaws the way they were written last time, and I think it's probably something that just was overlooked by council and by the people that reviewed that. And so it was something that really needed to be addressed, and it may be, it may be that we're getting a little bit looser with this than what we maybe would like to be, but I, I think it's basically, we're going to be doing practically what we have, we're going to be making our bylaw say what we're actually doing anyway. And so, and it hasn't been a problem. I have heard no complaints about the signs till now, and so I don't see why that should be a problem at all, so.
Further discussion? Anything further? Councilor Swagstrm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question was raised, why are we doing this? We're doing this because businesses should be able to advertise their products and their services. That's why we're doing this. And as is Councilor Fair had noticed, we weren't getting deluged with complaints with people concerned about mobile signs in the last year or two. That wasn't even on our radar until, until the enforcement thing came out and the, you know, the issue was raised in that regard. And as far as what other cities do, yep, there's some cities on the list here that have, that are more restrictive than we're proposing to do. There's also some that are less restrictive. Morden has no time limit, and Morden, if we, I've been to Morden, they seem okay. They don't seem deluged with mobile signs. Selkirk has no time limit. I think they're doing okay. Winkler has the same time limit that we're doing here, which is 12 months, one year, and Winkler seems to be functioning just fine. Basically, what this change will mean is that if a business wants to put up a sign on their property, they'll be able to continue to do so, and I will largely see things as they look now, and I think we can live with that.
Thank you. All right, counsel, this is something we've talked about both at our committee of counsel as a whole, as well as the previous council meeting, and again today. This is a first reading for changes, in my view, that is, that generally reflect the reality of what's already existing in the community. I think some of the concerns that temporary signs are becoming permanent signs do have merit in some regard, but I think as we move forward throughout this next year, we will watch this closely, see where this leads us as a community, and where the business community, how they use this more relaxed view of temporary signs, and we will then either be able to make a new decision or continue with the decision that we've made in the last few meetings. So with that, I'll vote in favor. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Second and third reading will come as, as we move forward. All right, any questions of counsel? All right, then we'll move to 11A, the Minister of Municipal Government Municipal Road Bridge Program. This is on page forty-four. Mr. Workantine, do you want to just refresh our memory of how many dollars this was and where this was applied?
This particular program, the, the province reviewed the, actually, a number of different programs that were initially separate and administered by, by different, different areas of, of local government. The original Municipal Road Improvement Program had previously carried a maximum funding allotment of $300,000 per year. The second program and third program that was formerly in place was the Grant and Aid Program and also the, the Bridge Improvement Program. Those programs were all combined, I believe, at the beginning of 2014 and consolidated into this particular program, as you see under this letter. Maximum funding available to the city is currently $400,000 per year, and that is the program that is represented by this piece of correspondence.
We did receive $400,000 this year for this specific program?
Yes, we did.
All right. How would that reflect when it comes to this year compared to maybe three years ago when the Municipal Road Program didn't exist? What was the approximate dollar value we got at that time?
At that time, there was a minor amount that was awarded to the city annually in respect to its dust control program on its gravelled streets, and from time to time, as there was an application in place for roads within the city that were designated as grant and aid eligible, the city would receive, I believe the last grant was received in 2012, and that was for $75,000, but that was only a periodic awarding based on the capital project that was being requested.
So this is at least $325,000, the last few years have been around $300,000 to $325,000 additional dollars at least.
Correct.
Okay, so that's good. Obviously, it's a good program, and we'll continue to, to use that. But did we use that for this year specifically? We didn't, it doesn't say here.
$300,000 to lumber and Elmdale and $100,000 to asphalt overlay.
Yeah, the, the majority of the, the funds, $300,000 were applied to the Elmdale Lumber Road Improvement Project. The balance being $100,000 was applied to the asphalt overlay program.
Okay, right. And this next year, we're expecting that, that will allot most of this towards the lumber or the Barkman project, is that right?
That's right.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? All right, then we'll move to Kurt Buchert, Water on Home Street North and Lowen Boulevard. This is a short email, although there have been other discussions with this specific individual as well. And Mr. Workantine, do you have any comments on this? Just what, is this something that's unusual, or is this something that's been happening for many years? My understanding is this area, actually, we got, we inherited from Hanover quite a number of years ago, and actually, this street was already in place. Is that correct?
From my understanding of history, yes. That precedes my time with the city by many years. That configuration on Home Street has been in place as far as the, the, the open, the open ditch that runs through the subdivision and then crosses Home Street at that present location has been installed at that configuration for many years. I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't hazard a guess as to how long, but when seasons change, such as now this fall, and on the occasion in spring, when there's a melting period of, of snow and ice, there, there is some, some minor water accumulation and ice buildup that does occur at that location from time to time. Our Public Works Department is aware of the, the conditions that they encounterize from time to time, and they address it through operational process when it, when it does occur.
Is this the only location in the city that has that type of a swell, or are there other, would this be similar to what is on, on Barkman Avenue?
That is, that's one location. There's also another location on Geisbrecht Street at Harvest Drive. There is again, an area where water is accumulated on the streets.
You're familiar with that one?
And I am familiar with that one. I used to live there, where there is a drainage channel that is directed from the street. The vast majority of the drainage systems, the land drainage systems in the city are curb and gutter or curb and open ditch basis. It's only more recently and in the newer subdivisions where an underground land drainage sewer system is installed, but there still are many new subdivisions that are installed with a curb and gutter style of drainage, so the, the systems are prevalent throughout the city in common.
One final question. Obviously, this has been a very unique fall and winter. We've had thawing and freezing, and it's astounding time actually compared to what we're used to. I've never heard of this issue there. I know in spring there have been issues, but not in December. And so this is very unique. Is it unique because of the weather we've been having, or is it a combination of that and sump pits, a possible sump pit from some of the larger areas being, being drained into that drain?
I'm, I'm not certain of what the, the impact of any sump drainage might be on that area, but speaking for the, the weather patterns particularly, it has been an extremely unusual fall. It has remained mild for a much longer period than what is usual. The fact that I think there's been at least two snowfalls that have melted in, in this fall as, which normally doesn't happen, it does create the opportunity for some water to pond, and when the temperatures do fall below zero or at zero, the water drainage doesn't happen as quite what we're used to within the city or what's expected of the drainage system. And it, it is a unique circumstance, but as I mentioned previously, our operating departments are aware of it, and they are taking, taking care and taking departments are aware of it, and they are taking, taking care and taking steps to, to alleviate the, the ice buildup or water accumulation where possible.
Obviously, safety is a concern, as long as, as long as there continues to be safe, safe passage, that's important, but it is one of those unique things, I think, that, that weather.
Well, and from time to time, road conditions can change in the, sorry, and the, the expectation is that, that motorists will also drive to the conditions that are present.
Counsel Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I agree that this has probably come as a result of the unusual December that we're having. I've driven there many times in the summertime when it's rained, and if you've got kids going to school, they, they, it, it must be very hard for them to maneuver across that fjord, if I can call it that, because that's really, in essence, what it is. I, I would sure like to see us entertained doing something there to rectify that, I mean, I, I can't say that, see that it would cost a significant amount of money, a bit of culvert and a little bit of asphalt down there, but I, I wouldn't mind if we could maybe took, take a look at that.
Counsel Siemens?
Along those lines, Mr. Mayor, through you to administration, has engineering looked at that at all? As, I would assume that's very flat there, and that would be, we'd have to raise that roadway substantially in order to get that to drain properly. Or has, they have, engineering had any input into that area?
I'm not aware of what particular review has done, has been done by the engineering department. As was mentioned, the configuration has been in place for decades, there has never been a request or prompt to, to review the configuration that's there.
Furthers, any idea when street reconstruction is going to be happening in that area, or has it happened?
I am not aware that that is on any capital plan that has been proposed for at least the near future.
Further questions, Counsel Penner?
I also have had opportunity to drive there as well, in winter and in summer, and I have noticed the very uncomfortable situation for people that live on that street to try and walk around it, or drive through it, or whatever they need to do. I think it is probably a good idea for us to have a look at that, have engineer, our engineering department look at that, tell us what they could or couldn't do, and what, what the issues really are, so we have a good understanding of, of what is possible or isn't possible, and then we can go further with this.
Further discussion from counsel? General consensus is then to ask administration to bring a report back, monitor, first of all, monitor this and then bring a report back, just to what, if any, if there are possibilities and costs, and, and the real, the realistic aspects of either doing something or not doing something?
Yes.
Is that generally what I'm hearing? Okay, counsel, you, is there consensus we can ask for that? Yes, thank you. Then, obviously, administration will continue to monitor, monitor that and get further information, and, and as we move forward, we'll be able to make any decisions that need to be done. Thank you. Then on page forty-six, there's a letter in regards to, from Mr. Trapp. Take his information, any discussion? Seeing none, take his information. We have the minutes from the J Cap Library on November fifteenth. Any questions? Seeing none. We will then move to eleven E, that is the Summer in the City, page forty-eight, a grant request. We'll take that into consideration, we'll put that as part of the budget discussions as we move forward. All right, there's no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counsel Fair, second by Counsel Penner. All those in favor? Thank you.